Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Michael Owen. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapata. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostol. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, November 1st, 2023 regularly scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Cameron Sapata.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning and we just thank you for who you are. We thank you for your great love, your mercy on all of our lives, Lord. And we also...
So this morning, we ask you for a very special blessing on the October retirees of Hillsborough County. We pray for and lift up the retirees of Code Enforcement Chantel Lawton, who served 35 years of service, and in Facility Services Cedric Taylor, who served 23 years of service, and Reece Wise, 13 years of service, and Veterans Affairs Jacard JaCarrel Bird, who served 25 years of service. We pray a special blessing on their lives. We pray long and healthy life full of peace and joy in your holy name. And also, Lord, we lift up before you today, Israel, we pray for peace in Israel, your protection. We pray for all the military. We pray for our military members that are serving here and abroad. We pray for their protection. We thank you for leading them and guiding them to safety. We just thank you for your great protection over their lives. And we pray also for the friends and family members of those that lost loved ones in the shootings here recently. We pray, give them a great peace, a great peace in the middle of this terrible, terrible things that they're going through. We just thank you, Lord, for that right now. And we also pray for protection over our county, our state, and our nation. And we ask you to bless this meeting in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sapata. We have one commendation this morning, but the recipient is running a little bit behind with traffic. So Bonnie, if we can go ahead and jump to the change of the agenda and then we'll come back when she arrives.
Yes, there are two items that have been deferred. The first one is item A1, which is to accept the 2023 Local Housing Initiative Strategies report from the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. And that has been deferred to November 15th. And then item A8, also deferred to November 15th, which is approved an agreement between Hillsborough County and the Tampa Bay History Center. They have one item that has been removed from consent for discussion by Commissioner Cohen. It's item A5, which is to approve the 2024 Master Calendar for the Board of County Commissioners as provided in the Agenda background material. We have several items for time certain. The first one is at 10:00 AM, item D1. This is related to item B4. It is to conduct a public hearing and consider amending the Hillsborough County Code to reduce the requirement in the Direct Payment Program, which is known as the DPP. Item B4, also at 10:00 AM, related to item D1, is to direct staff to schedule and advertise a public hearing for December 6, 2023, at 10:00 AM, to consider approval of the Specialist Assessment Resolution, an assessment role related to the hospital direct payment program for fiscal year 2024. Also at 10:00 AM is item D2, is to conduct the first public hearing continued from September 20th, 2023, for the designation of a brownfield area parcel at 4810 South 50th Street in Tampa, Florida. Item F1 by Commissioner Hagan is at 10:15. This is to approve by resolution designating the month of November 2023 as Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month. Item E1 at 10:30 is a special appearance by Craig Richard, President and CEO Tampa Bay Economic Development Council, to present their final activity report for 2023. Item B2 at 10:45 is related to item B3, is to authorize staff to proceed with advertising or request for proposal, RFP, to solicit a master developer for the redevelopment of the approximately 67-acre county site surrounding the Museum of Science and Industry. Item B3 at 10:45 is to adopt a resolution authorizing a lease agreement between Hillsborough County and the Museum of Science and Industry for seven acres, more or less, with existing facilities, to approve and execute the main lease, to approve and execute the East Building premises lease, and to approve a parking license agreement. That's related to item B2. And 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
May I motion to approve the changes?
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, we're now going to the public comment portion of the agenda. The board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the board members, however it is requested, at the same time when addressing the board. The comments are not directed personally against the commissioner or staff, but rather the issues. We've set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. When the chair calls your name, please come forward, state your name. Each person will have three minutes. We only have a couple folks that have signed up this morning. Jason Rodriguez was the first one, followed by David Coleman, and then William Ellsworth. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Commission. My name is Jason Rodriguez, and I represent Bay Care Health System, which includes St. Joseph's Hospitals, speaking to the directed payment program. We appreciate the county's partnership with this. It's a fantastic program, helps with healthcare funding, and we urge the commission to support the items on the agenda related to DPP. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Dave Coleman, and if that was about the healthcare card, healthcare card from Hillsborough County, absolutely support that. With homeless families begging for hotel vouchers and children sleeping in cars and on couches, not having basic needs and transportation, is this the year for the mose land improvements in Planetarium? $35 million on a new high school, $50 million on a black history center, a half a million on a pickleball court in Mango. This morning I saw on the news that they could play for a pot, maybe the Seminoles could build it. We don't have $8 million for hope, affordable housing, yet all these projects. You passed that library thing. So at 18 years old, I was handed a draft card for Vietnam, and a 16-year-old, it was said the other day, a 16-year-old these days could be forced to give birth, but we can't take out books without guidance. The library director said that there were six public comments. At the first meeting, there were three of us. Other meetings are all over town with little notice, unrecorded, and no speaker systems. The same with the Parks Department, some of the flu meetings, public works, and I'm sure many others. These aren't town halls, they're county business. Don't sunshine laws apply? Halfway between Odessa and Gibsonton is a wonderful building that we're standing in with audio and recording, all we need. I attended Division Zero meeting, they need money for cooperation from the county, city, and state to restripe and lower limits on Sly and Water Avenues. It's their first phase Plan A design to save lives. This could be a model for other secondary roads everywhere. Look into it, make it happen. Still concerned about our budget. San Antonio with 2 million people has a $6.7 billion budget. Phoenix with 4.5 million people has a $10.5 billion budget. Suffolk, New York with 1.4 million people has a $4.6 billion budget. The total in Hillsborough County, including our three cities and our school board, is $16.2 billion. There's something rotten in Hillsborough, and it's not me. This morning I looked up commissioners' discretionary spending. A Times article from a couple years ago said that 30 million, and listed about, said it was 30 million, and listed about a million in flag money from each seat. It itemized these slush funds. I looked, most looked like nice things, but could we please vote on these millions? The city had 100 people show up twice, and they stayed until midnight, eventually turning down an increase and finding funds in what they had. This board is time certain and could care less about public comment, could care less about traffic deaths remaining the same year after year, or houseless numbers going up. We need responsible governance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Last speaker this morning, William Ellsworth. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Ellsworth Williams, President and CEO for Veterans Council of Veterans. We're headquartered at 3810 West Kennedy Boulevard. I'm here today on three parts, three-part reasons. First is upcoming Veterans Day is coming up, and that's something important in Hillsborough, because we have the largest veteran population. Not only do we have the largest veteran population in Florida, we have over 74.9% of the veterans have families. This month in November is also considered Military Veterans Family Month. Please take consideration these families who, they get triggered too. So we have all this stuff going on in Israel and Ukraine. Trust me, it affects them as well, so please keep them in their mind. Also importantly, Florida has the second-largest women veteran population. So that by itself, and then looking at McDougal Air Force Base, which is like where the veterans come from, so I just want to make sure that we acknowledge the Veterans Day. And for me, obviously, Veterans Day, one of the times, I become more visible, so I'll be busy, I need to be cloned. So if you do have the opportunity or time to visit a Veterans Day event, I definitely explore that. Secondly, I'm here to announce that I've been honored to be selected and inducted in the Florida Veterans Hall of Fame, which is on November 14th. One thing I do want to highlight, up to seven veterans in Hillsborough County has been inducted in Florida Veterans Hall of Fame. It would be great if instead of me having to drive all the way to Tallahassee to see my name, that we can acknowledge that here in Florida of all these veterans that have helped their community. Finally, which I'm most proud of, I want to thank the veterans on the county commission from Joshua Wostol, Navy, and Commissioner Donna Sapata, Army. You've been a strong supporter of Veterans Council of Veterans, I really appreciate it, and I want to thank you for your service. I'm not trying to exclude the other county commissioners, but for Veterans Council of Veterans, for Veterans Day, I want to acknowledge that we have veterans who continue to serve, and all that, I say thank you very much for this country. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. All right, that closes the public comment portion of the agenda. Now we'll circle back to our commendation and recognize Commissioner Kemp.
Do you want to take the minutes to do that?
Thank you very much, and I'd like to have Lynn Marvin-Dingfelter please join me at the podium. Good morning, and welcome. I'm pleased to honor this amazing woman, whose commitment to preserving Hillsborough County's legacy is an inspiration to all of us. Through her production company, Creative on Main Street, Ms. Dingfelter and her dedicated team have crafted award-winning documentaries that offers viewers, that offer viewers a glimpse into our county's remarkable history. It's a pleasure to present this commendation to Lynn Marvin-Dingfelter, a talented cinematic artist and storyteller, and an insightful entrepreneur. And it reads, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Lynn Marvin-Dingfelter for her dedication in preserving the rich cultural history of the region through her cinematic accomplishments. A Chicago native whose heart belongs to Tampa, Ms. Dingfelter is a lifelong dedicated storyteller, and after graduating from NYU, a degree in broadcast journalism, she served with distinction as a reporter, writer, anchor, and producer at numerous television news stations throughout the nation. After settling in Tampa, and we're lucky that she did, she transitioned into becoming a documentarian and an entrepreneur. As co-owner and executive producer of Creative on Main Street in West Tampa, Dingfelter and her talented staff have produced a dozen nostalgic documentaries that focus on Hillsborough County's multifaceted history and the interesting characters who make our community unique. Many of her documentaries have been debuted on PBS and at Tampa Theater, and they've won numerous awards, most notably the Emmy award-winning JFK in Tampa, the 50th anniversary, which I believe was also, is at the Library of Congress, correct? Yeah. Her cinematic creation, La Gazzetta, 100 Years and Three Generations Behind America's Only Trilingual Newspaper, expertly chronicles the success of well-renowned periodical, the well-renowned periodical, and three generations of its owners, the Mantega family. And after her film won at the 2023 Gasparilla Film Festival, Dingfelter continues to work tirelessly on cinematically capturing research with interviews, vintage film, and photos. And I was surprised by how much she were able to dig up for that, which I, it was really interesting, and music, and utilizing all components to create oral histories that help keep Hillsborough's historical legacy alive. And I'll just say, I was looking at Ernest Cooper wrote about you, and yeah, it really was, and he called her the Indiana Jones of Hillsborough County for digging up hidden jewels and recording them and giving to us and having us keep those. And also, I think the JFK film, that's also, it was both JFK and La Gazzetta that are at the Library of Congress now, right?
Yes, La Gazzetta will be. It hasn't been formally put in yet.
Okay, okay. I wanted to check on that, because, and I've seen Goody Goody, Past and Present, many of you know the, down in now Hyde Park, but once had a storied past and a present now, and brought back, and then the fabulous Rockers, back and forth between here and Cuba, just great, great stuff, and thank you for sharing that all with this community that we can enjoy. So the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend Lynn Marvin-Dingfelter for her latest cinematic achievement and wishes her much well-deserved success. There you go, Lynn. And would you like to say a few words? Go ahead.
Thank you. I feel awkward having my back to you all. I want to say thank you to the commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. This is really very special. It's weird, because I love what I do, so I don't see where it deserves an award or recognition, but I feel an urgency to save the stories, you know, and save people's special things that they've done. I was lucky enough to talk to Congressman Sam Gibbons just three months before we lost him, and he sat and talked to me about his days and his friendship with JFK. I mean, that's invaluable, you know? I feel like I've kind of saved people forever. But anyhow, we have wonderful sound, and I have to thank all the people who've helped either being in a part of it, sound bites, or the people behind the scenes, Larry Wizicki, of course, my husband, who does all the cooking when I'm working on stuff. But this is really wonderful, and I'm honored to be able to do this kind of thing and help save what makes Hillsborough County special. Thank you so much. Thank you.
And I, you know, I just wanted to, I wanted also just to, the Kennedy film was so interesting because he was here in Hillsborough County four days before his assassination, and did a parade.
And it was supposed to happen here. It was actually, I found that out, it was supposed to be a very happy, little fun feature documentary, and as I started talking to law enforcement people, they started telling me about different departments of law enforcement, how it should have happened here. It was like, oh dear, this documentary took a twist, but if you listen, the story kind of tells itself, you know? And anyhow, this is really lovely. Thank you so much.
And Commissioner Cohen wants to make a comment.
I just wanted to say congratulations, and also to encourage anybody that has not seen either the JFK or the La Gazzetta documentary, to see them, because there's so much great history. And I want to encourage you to make a film about the former members of the Board of County Commissioners. There are a lot of real characters that have served here over the years, and I'll bet there's some great footage of some of them that you could find, so.
But thank you, thank you for those kind words. I'm gonna go up and get a picture.
Oh, great.
If we can have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, Bonnie, you want to first take up the item Commissioner Cohen pulled?
I think we could do item B1.
Oh, do B1, okay.
Yes, and which is to approve the agreement with the Tampa Bay Convention and Visitors Bureau, better known as Visit Tampa Bay for their fiscal year '24 and '25 budget. Ron Barton, Assistant County Administrator, is here to present this item. Santiago Carrato with Visit Tampa Bay is here as well for any questions.
Good morning, Ron. We had the full-blown presentation last time, so we don't need to do all that this time, do we?
I get the drift. B1 is base funding for Visit Tampa Bay for FY '24-'25. You'll recall that you allowed a deferral so we could correct an Exhibit A error. We've done so, and we ask for your approval of this item.
All right, can we hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion, Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Myers, no, no other board comments. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Good job. All right, Bonnie, next item.
Thank you. If we can move to item A5, this was an item that was pulled from consent by Commissioner Cohen. You had a change, Commissioner Cohen, and then it has also been suggested that we add back a few board meetings. So maybe Commissioner Cohen, if you could speak about your change, and then I could speak about a couple suggestions as well.
There was one small thing I wanted to suggest, and then a larger discussion. The small thing is that I was going to suggest that we move the July 9th land use meeting to July 16th, and we can talk about why that might make sense. Just, long story short, there's not many meetings in July, most of the boards don't meet, and with the exception of that meeting, there's really nothing else on the calendar that week. So that was my suggestion, was to move that. The main reason I pulled this, though, was to talk about Thursday nights, and just the fact that I believe we're going to be here this Thursday night again. And let me start this out by saying that it is very difficult to construct these calendars. I know that the staff really struggle with all the different meetings and all the different notice requirements and all the different statutory requirements to make it as seamless as possible. But we all know that these last couple of Thursday nights, we've been gummed up with a bunch of really short meetings. And when I looked at this calendar, I couldn't really figure out what the rhyme or reason to the Thursday night scheduling is. And I also saw that the default Thursday that seems to always be used is the fourth Thursday of the month, and it seems to me it might be better for us to pick something earlier in the month when we're already here and in the rhythm of being here for meetings. So I wanted to throw open to the board the idea of giving the Planning Commission and our Land Development Coordination Office some guidance as to what Thursdays we would prefer for them to schedule us, and I was going to suggest maybe the second or third Thursday of the month, as opposed to what appears to be the default now for the fourth. So those are the two items I wanted to bring up, and then I think Bonnie wanted to speak to the issue of some of the additional meetings that might need to be scheduled.
Okay, thank you. You will notice that there are several months where we only have one board meeting, and that happens for various reasons, although this particular year it happens a few extra times because of the elections. So the first item I just wanted to bring to your attention, and you can choose to add one back if you would like, is in June. The third Wednesday is on June 19th, which is Juneteenth, which is a holiday, and so we did not, of course, schedule a board meeting for that day. Also, at a prior meeting, you gave us some guidance that you would like us not to schedule then for the Thursday, so we did not schedule that second meeting that particular month. But if you would like to schedule on Thursday, June 20th is an option. Right now it is not, there's just the one meeting in June, and also, there is just one meeting in July. August is a situation where we have the primary, sorry, yes, the primary election, and so that, the board has had a practice of not scheduling a board meeting the day after an election, which of course, election is on Tuesday. So that would then be the question whether you would want to have a board meeting on the 21st. There aren't too many of you that would be affected by a primary this year, and so if you wanted to, you could have a board meeting on August 21st, but we do not currently have one on the calendar for that reason. So I wanted to bring those two to your attention, possible of June 20th, which is a Thursday, and August 21st, which is the Wednesday after the primary.
And I know Commissioner Wostol's first in the queue, but let me jump in. I'm the one that made those suggestions. Historically, according to Luanne, but first of all, let me say that no one is more supportive of less meetings than me. I want to say that, first of all.
I challenge that.
Well, it's a close second, if that's the case. That being said, historically, we've had 20 to 22 BOCC meetings a year, and based on the initial calendar, we had 17. So I thought that that was really light, and so I also know that historically, July's been a meeting free, so we've only had one meeting there. But I fully support the June 20th and August 21st. Adding those back in, that'd bring us to 19, closer to the, again, historical number of meetings that we've had, so that's why we landed there. Didn't want to presume anything, but Commissioner Owen, the reality is, you and I are the only ones potentially impacted, and I don't see you having, that being an issue for you. So that's why I suggested that, but it certainly is open to a board decision and discussion. Commissioner Wostol?
I'm happy to wait. My, I'll support whatever you want on this. Mine was going to focus on EPC, so I can be just at the end of the queue, you guys can resolve this, and then I'll talk about EPC. Does that...
Actually, could you maybe do it now, because I think it will affect maybe what Thursday we pick.
Okay, you all got the notice, I canceled another meeting, and I frankly, just observing my first year, it's a group of scientists, and I see at maximum the benefit that we could have an EPC meeting, would even be quarterly, in my opinion. And then on the few sprinkled times that they actually need action, if we need to have an unscheduled... have an, an unscheduled meeting, I know it's challenging, but it just seems like we have 15 members of EPC sitting in the audience without any true benefit to the community. A lot of them are updates, award-based, which I appreciate, but it just seems like official meetings scheduled, if that frees up our calendar, I just, unless someone's got another opinion or we need to talk to EPC, it doesn't seem like we need more meetings than quarterly scheduled for, for that function. I would love to hear any other points of view.
I wonder as a point of order if we need to take that up at the EPC, when we're convened as the EPC?
Yeah, I've, I've brought it up before. I don't know. I didn't get much feedback. I don't think that you were at that meeting. It was kind of left in my hands, but it sounds like there needs to be a bigger change than instead of me just constantly canceling meetings, that maybe we just have a, a scheduling change at that meeting, which is fine. I, we can hear the point of order, I don't know.
Bonnie, historically, when the schedule is set, does EPC, do we take into account their thoughts or have we just always operated under a monthly meeting?
I would actually ask Luanne to probably answer that, but it is included on here so you can see the whole landscape of EPC and all the meetings so that you can adjust your schedules accordingly. But when we put our Board of County Commissioners' agenda together, we mostly, we drive that first, based on the first and third Wednesdays.
Okay, so I'm still unclear if it requires EPC approval or authorization for us to make that change.
I can tell you that the days that they were on were just kind of changed randomly. I've been told that directly. So it didn't require any action from the board, they just were changed. And I know that to be a fact.
And that gets noticed accordingly, exactly.
Yeah.
It's probably more of just a noticing issue than, than anything else.
So do we want to take that up at an EPC meeting? But, and I might not even be the, the chair then and I'm, I'm fine with that role, it doesn't bother me at all, or that role will be swapped, but I would encourage, from what I've seen and experienced, that we only need quarterly meeting for the EPC. It's just, it's on this calendar, so I thought it was appropriate.
Yeah, I, I mean, if you, I just, I'm not sure who, I'm not, I'm not sure where the decision gets made for how many EPC meetings there are, that's all.
We can change it in that meeting then.
I think that would be the appropriate place to do that and we will reflect it on the master calendar as well.
Okay, Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, and I was just going to say as a, just courtesy to the EPC, because there's nothing that can't be changed still during that meeting, but the discussion is well taken. And I just want to agree with Commissioner Cohen and just say that I had, after we had several, I've never seen so many Thursday night meetings that are, and several of them like 15 minutes long and it's a lot of energy and, to, to come in here just to do that. And so I had called up Mr. Nita. I know I, I haven't quite talked to, I meant to follow up with some other calls too, but I understood that it was, you know, Mr. Gormley, Mr. Nita, Ms. Finley, that all needed to get together to coordinate those. And I really think there should just be one set aside on a Thursday evening, and I would agree, second or third Thursday, where that's the open slot and everything gets scheduled in there. And if somehow there's some issue, maybe it could be at a land use meeting, which are amazingly rarely lasting past noon now. So maybe that could be backup if we needed. But I really, you know, I, I haven't experienced all these Thursday nights in the time that I've been here until recently. And I understand it's because two departments are scheduling on Thursday nights and, you know, randomly, instead of having one set aside. So I don't know, if you'd like to make a motion and I'll do a second or however, I'll...
Well, if it's all right, maybe I'll make a motion with everything. Moving the one meet, the one land use meeting in July from the 9th to the 16th, adding the June 20th and August 21st BOCC meetings back to the calendar and asking the Land Development Coordination and Planning Commissions to defer to, to when possible, I'll just say the second Thursday of the month in the evening as our designated land use night. And let's see how that goes.
Second.
And, and let me, let me just add, I'm not asking them to reschedule anything that is already set in stone and noticed for the first three months of 2024. So let's just say that starting in April 1st, we'd like them to try to adhere to this new policy and see how it goes.
Okay. No, I certainly think that's the, probably the cleanest way to do it. Any other comments or questions on, on the motion? Or if not, motion Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Kemp. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, great. Bonnie, which item you want to take up next?
Commissioner Hagan, would you like to take your item a little bit early? It looks like your group might be here.
Is, we're waiting on the photographer. I don't know if he came back.
Oh, you're waiting on a photographer?
Oh, he's here? Okay, good, I didn't see you over there. Yeah, we'll go ahead and move with my item and it, this won't take long.
And that is item F1.
Okay.
Commissioner Hagan?
Um, board members, today I bring forward a resolution that enumerates the treasured contributions made by our vibrant Hindu-American community, which greatly enhances Hillsborough County's tapestry of diversity. As we examine the resolution and the people it honors, it becomes evident that our widely diverse community has been greatly influenced by their cultural, ethnic, linguistic, and religious vitality brought forth by its residents, including the thriving Hindu-American population. Throughout history, Hindu-Americans have contributed significantly to our society. They've enriched our cultural landscape with their philosophical wisdom, holistic medicine, classical Indian performing arts, meditation, and yoga. Furthermore, their commitment to education, strong family values, and adherence to the rule of law have exemplified their role as model citizens. This year marks a 130th anniversary of the official introduction of Hinduism to the United States by the Reverend Swami Vivekanan, a pivotal moment in the history of Hinduism in this nation. Since then, Hindu-Americans have not only become an integral part of our social fabric, but have also made substantial strides in various academic fields, including astrophysics, computer science, engineering, law, and neuroscience, contributing significantly to the quality of our higher education systems. Additionally, their entrepreneurial spirit has fostered economic growth and vitality in Hillsborough County, impacting sectors such as business, information technology, hospitality, finance, academia, manufacturing, energy, retail, trade, medicine, and science. The philanthropic endeavors of the Hindu-American organizations and individuals have uplifted our community through selfless service and charitable initiatives. Their dedication to the principles of HEMSA, emphasizing nonviolence and harmony, has paved the way for sustainable living and environmental consciousness. Furthermore, their cultural celebrations, including the joyous festival of Diwali, which I've attended several times, have fostered an atmosphere of peace and understanding within our diverse community. I'm not going to read the resolution, it's long. I included it in the, in the backup and I touched on many of the highlights. Just a couple of excerpts I will read. Well, first of all, it states, "A resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, declaring that November 2023 be observed as Hindu-American Awareness and Appreciation Month to honor the historical significance to the Hindu-American community." And just a couple of the points in here. Whereas there are now over 50 Hindu temples, religious centers, and cultural centers throughout Hillsborough County, whereas Hindu-Americans have been an exemplary philanthropic, peaceful, law-abiding community who contribute to the local economy, safety, and security of Hillsborough County. And whereas HEMSA, which is a Sanskrit word for non-injury or non-violent, is a central principle for Hindu-Americans in Hillsborough County, and it provides the ethical foundation for vegetarianism, environmentalism, and harmonious living. And whereas Hindu-Americans promote the ideals of tolerance, pluralism, and religious freedom, which are inherent to their beliefs and respect the diversity of all faiths, and the Vedas, the 5,000-year-old text of Hindu-Americans, provide the basis for these core principles. Truth is one, the wise call it by many names. And then finally, whereas Hillsborough County has been a place that welcomes, honors, and supports the diverse array of practices, beliefs, and traditions among its citizens and believes that it is in the best interest of the county for Hindu-Americans to be recognized and appreciated. So with that, Commissioners, in recognition and appreciation for the many contributions of Hindu-Americans, and in the interest of fostering an environment of inclusivity and respect in Hillsborough County, I pass the gavel and move that we adopt this resolution designated November 2023 as Hindu-American Awareness and Appreciation Month in Hillsborough County, and that we add, and we seek to increase understanding and awareness of the Hindu-American community. And then after we pass this, I'm going to ask Representative to, to say a few words.
Second.
We have a, a motion by Commissioner Hagan and second by Commissioner Wostel. So now we'll have comment. Any board discussion first? Commissioner Cameron Sepeda?
Yes, so I know that they've contributed greatly to our community in so many different ways, such as science and, you know, as you mentioned, so many different areas. We're very, very thankful for them, for all they've done for our community. But just using the word Hindu as a religious word for, it's a religion. And because of the wording on that, of using the word Hindu, for that reason, I couldn't support it. But if that was changed, that particular word wasn't in there as a religion, I could support it. But it's only for that reason that I can't. But I do greatly appreciate all of them, all they've done for our community, but because of using the word Hindu, for that reason, I, I can't support it.
Thank you so much for your comments. Do you, okay, let's record our votes, please.
Motion carried. Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda voted no.
All right, thank you, board members. Now, I would like to, I would like to invite Representative, my friend Sid Shaw, to please come forward, just say a couple of words and then we'll, we'll, we'll take a quick picture. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank you for inviting me and recognizing me to speak. I am Sudhir Shah. On behalf of the Hindu-American community of Hillsborough County and beyond, I want to express my appreciation to Commissioner Hagan and thank the entire Board of County Commissioners to successfully adopt much-needed resolution. The timing of this resolution is so perfect that in a few days, we'll be celebrating Diwali on November 12th, 2023. Diwali is a festival of lights that celebrates the victory of inner lights over spiritual darkness, good over evil, and knowledge over ignorance. Today, I am joined by a number of Hindu-American community leaders and ask them to kindly rise.
Don't be shy. You make your way all the way down here.
This recognition is very valuable to my community and look forward working with the Commissioners in the future. We share similar values as the mainstream America and we are a very loyal and peaceful community. Again, I am grateful. God bless you, us all. Namaste.
So we're going to take a quick picture. Do you want to invite them to come up? We can do that and then we'll... I figured we were going to be running behind, so I told them it had to be short and sweet, but now, you know, we're, we're ahead of schedule, so.
Of course.
Bonnie, what's, what's the next item?
Yes, and your resolution for F1 also included you waiving the rules to take that early, right? Yes, okay. Thank you. We're going to move on to item B2. This is to discuss the request for proposals for the master developer for the Mozy site. If you could also waive your rules to take that item early.
Second.
Motion to waive the rules. Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Cohen, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And I think before John Mueller gets started, and we also have Representative John Smith from Mozy as well, as various other staff, I think Commissioner Hagan, you maybe wanted to give a little history lesson on this one before we got started.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of brief remarks. Board members, I've, I've long felt that the 74-acre Mozy site was the county's most underutilized asset. With the size and location of this property, we have a rare opportunity to capitalize on the synergy and proximity of USF and the other economic drivers in the Uptown Innovation District to transform the site into an innovative mixed-use urban development. I believe the opportunities are limitless. So if you recall, several months ago, initiated a board discussion on moving forward with developing the site. A motion asked staff to bring back a timeline, process, and recommended uses or categories for redeveloping the site. As you can tell by reviewing the backup, staff put in a tremendous amount of, of time and effort on preparing the document, and I want to thank them for all of their efforts. And so with that, I'll ask John to, to present the item and then after, when he's finished, I do want to make a couple of comments and then we'll open it up to board discussion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners, John Mueller, Director of Facilities Management, Real Estate Services. Presenting with me today is Ron Barton, our Assistant County Administrator for Economic Prosperity. And in attendance, in addition to John Smith of Mozy, are other members of the RFP Task Group. The presentation that follows is for B2, as Commissioner Hagan mentioned, for the RFP for the 67 acres. However, I will also be touching on item B3. So I'll be brief, Commissioner Hagan, but this is a two-for-one BOGO, so please cut me a little slack on that one.
BOGOs are my favorite.
So, B3 is the request for the approval of two leases and licenses for the nonprofit So just briefly, for those in attendance, in the audience, in the public, this is the entire 74-acre site at present. USF to the north, Greco Softball Complex Medical Examiner to south, and right on Fowler Currently on site, and you'll hear these terms, or you'll read these terms in there. You can see that these are the current buildings and parking lots in the site. Mozy's operating today out of the Kids in Charge and the bottom floor of the IBHS building. The IMAX Dome is just to the east of that. The West Building, primarily two floors, is currently used by the County Emergency Management as a warehouse and two, our new emergency management warehouse is constructed. And the East Building is partially used by Mozy for education camps. And as well, the county head start is located in the northeast corner. I'll review the plan in detail more for these facilities, but like to start focusing on the RFP vision. So we've highlighted some key words in our five-point RFP vision. I would like to note two caveats. This is not the final opportunity for you as the BOCC to have input into the final RFP outcomes. With these vision points, we are suggesting a broad direction, but similar to a funnel. The proposal process will, will also engage the final developer in negotiations. And in addition, we list these as ideal and are not necessarily limiting any proposers in our initial RFP who may have other uses, which are not included in our vision, which may be of interest. Secondly, we did want to highlight to the RFP proposers an emphasis on economic drivers and mixed use. As you see, some of the ideal outcomes there are encouraging public spaces for entertainment... As you see, some of the ideal outcomes there are encouraging public spaces for entertainment and hospitality. The intended vision seeks to support the creation of jobs and economic activity by encouraging advanced industries, including as an example, digital spaces or commercial audiovisual. The proximity to Mozy, USF, and other larger institutions in the area are identified as opportunities to collaborate for commercial growth and business development enterprises. So let me speak a little bit how item B3 weaves into the fabric here. This slide depicts Mozy's future location in the redevelopment and also speaks to the leases and licenses in Agenda Item B3, which is the companion item in support of this. The approach for Mozy is to provide a specific seven-acre area, as shown in the yellow highlighted area on the slides. It includes the Kids in Charge, IBHS, and the IMAX Theater, which Mozy is currently planning to reopen as a planetarium and digital theater. I'll note four key points. We're creating a dedicated space for Mozy to provide certainty to both developers and Mozy in the all-critical proposal stage. Our review of Mozy in comparison with other cultural attractions in the county is that they have a very robust education attendance, but can benefit greatly from increased paid attendance. The new planetarium and the future development that will surround Mozy aligns with fulfillingness. The buildings in the blue-shaded area will become available for redevelopment in approximately the next 12 to 30 months. Our county head start will move to a lease base. We're currently on a site search for that. And in the next 12 months, Mozy will move their education in camps from the East to the West Building temporarily on the upper floors, while the county is using it for emergency management. This allows development possibilities for almost the great majority of the entire 67 acres in the near term, with the West Building being the last area to be addressed. Mozy's parking needs and utility needs are noted in the RFP. Any development will need to ensure that these are both provided in their current capacity and untarred erupted. However, as Mozy understands, parking will likely be shared public spaces. Lastly, in noting Mozy's financial needs and the requests of the county over recent years, the revised leases and licenses seek to right-size Mozy for sustainability, and they do call for a phase-in where Mozy is expected to pay their occupancy, as do all the other nonprofits for utilities and other provided costs. For Slide six, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Barton. This will be our last slide.
Thank you, John. Good morning, Ron Barton, Assistant County Administrator. What I want to share with you is kind of the outcomes from your decision to move forward with the RFP to finalization of development. The RFP calls for a two-phased negotiation with the developer. John talked about touchpoints for the board. There actually are going to be three touchpoints. The first is your decision on selection of that final master developer. The second will be, as we move forward in Phase One with the developers, we have a pre-development phase, and we want to bring back refinements to the actual master plan, so you can see those. And if there's any course correction that needs to be effectuated, we would do that then. And then the third touch is when we bring back the final development agreement with the developer, and that expresses the financial terms between the parties, timing, and specifics of development. So those are the three major touchpoints. To go back, Phase One is a pre-DA, and so we need to work with the selected master developer to entitle the property. It's been a science museum for decades, and the property needs to be entitled to match up with the concepts that are proposed for development. Land use changes, zoning, and further entitlements that'll match the master plan that they're developing. And of note, even though it's county-owned, it actually sits in the municipality of City of Tampa. And so we'll go through the Tampa development approval process. After that's done, we brought that back to you, we've done course refinements and entitled the property, we'll then enter into an actual development agreement with those specifics. We know the financial, we can better define the financial terms at that point, and what our relationships are with the developer, take-down strategies for the property, and development timing. So that's the Phase Two Development Agreement. With that, will you turn it back over to John or open it up for questions for the board?
John, you got anything else?
I have nothing. I'll just note for the next item now, since we're discussing it, that the item B3 involves a 12-year lease for the main Mozy seven-acre campus, a one-year lease for the East Building, and a parking lot license agreement annual for the record.
All right, thank you. Couple of comments I want to make, then I'm going to make a motion, then we can open it up for board discussion. Development of this magnitude requires significant due diligence to ensure that the proper master developer is chosen, and that the very best development agreement is approved. That maximizes the development potential consistent with our vision. And that's why staff detailed the two-phase approach to the development agreement and master developer over nearly a two-year period. That I want to stress, and John touched on this, requires several board votes along the way. The closest thing that we've experienced several years ago was the process to develop the site on Bruceby Downs up in New Tampa that resulted in the Performing Arts Center, the Dog Park, and then all the commercial development along Bruceby Downs. And I can tell you, throughout that process, I took a couple of years, we had minimum five to six votes along the way. The board was always involved. And as, and I wrote it down, I think this is a quote from what John said, "This is not the final opportunity for the BOCC to weigh in on the RFP outcome." So is that fair? Is that accurate? So the two-phase approach, and let me say, I do like the way staff is recommending how we address Mozy's future by, you know, providing a dedicated space. As we know, this is a county building, a county responsibility. Over the years, there has been different ideas on the best way to improve their financial condition and ensure long-term sustainability. They've had challenges in recent years, but I am very pleased with their new CEO, John Smith, who's hit the ground running and really has a plan to change their focus and direction. As a Mozy board member, I know Commissioner Kemp has stressed the importance of Mozy remaining on that site, and I'm sure she can address their new direction in greater detail. But I like the fact that Mozy will remain on the site, on the three buildings, on seven acres. It's not a part of the RFP, and again, we'll discuss that a little bit further on here. And then in my final couple of points, and many of these were actually highlighted in yellow on the screen, but I like how it identifies the county's vision of establishing mixed uses that creates a live, work, and play environment while leveraging the innovation district's existing economic drivers to create an innovative urban development. 2.4, 2.4.2 mentions dense development pattern, introducing desired target industries and economic drivers. 2.4.3, mixed-use creative digital space, such as commercial AV studio, black box theater, or other visual performing arts platform. This complements Mozy's planetarium and learning labs. And I was supportive of including this in the initial RFP. And then when I spoke to staff, spoke to John on their vision on the planetarium, we really have some exciting plans of what they're going to do there. This would just complement what they're doing and would really be a part of the entertainment opportunities that we want to be included. And then finally, I mentioned the establishing appropriate mix of uses, including hospitality, entertainment, and retail to be integrated with other marketable uses. So again, I want to thank staff, and they put a lot of work into this. And again, we really have an opportunity to do something special here, and so I appreciate all their efforts. So with that, I'm going to pass the gavel and move that we move forward with advertising the RFP, and then we'll open up the board discussion.
Second. I think we have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Cohen?
I just would like to say, Commissioner Hagan, I think you said it beautifully, and I completely agree with you. I think this RFP is so exciting. This is such a tremendous opportunity for the county to see something really big happen on this site. And what I particularly was impressed about when the staff briefed me on this was the flexibility of what they are asking for. We literally could get back anything for this, and I think it's going to create a very, very interesting dynamic for all of us when we actually see who responds to this and what type of different things they propose. Remember that there's that over Fowler Avenue Bridge that was constructed, I believe by us, that really connects this site to the university and will connect it eventually to the stadium. It really could just be very, very exciting. So I'm happy to be in support and agree that the preservation of the museum was created very, very thoughtfully in this process.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, and I'll just say, I've been deeply engaged in this for several years, and we had an RFP before, and I wasn't as, there didn't seem to be a place for Mozy necessarily in that prior RFP. I think we've come to recognize really the center that museum, Museum of Science, takes in communities. And one of the first things I did before was look up our 20 competitive communities that we had across the country that we designate and look at, and every one of them had a robust and strong science center. And, you know, I think Mozy has lost its way in the past, and it took me a while to really understand what it was and kind of where it needed to go. And I think that turnaround has been made. I think this will be another move in that direction, and it's, I agree, it's an exciting opportunity. There could be really, really just great things to come out of this, both having Mozy in our community, but both in redevelopment in that area and using that property in a way that is, will be, will just enhance our community totally. So I'm very excited about that.
Thank you. Commissioner Winstone?
What is the timeline, especially since we have a bunch of emergency management operations operating out of there? And we have competing PSOC enhancements and delays on that. So are we confident that we won't accidentally make our emergency management operations be homeless for a little while with a lot of their vehicles?
I'm confident that we won't do that. We've contemplated that in the agreements. And for those of us that know the Mozy site well, I'll just say from past experience or my knowledge is that the West Building is not, is probably not the place where the development's going to start.
Okay, because it's in phases.
It's the beating heart. It's the center of the Mozy area.
And now I had this clarified for me, that we are not trying to be developers. We are selling this land, correct?
Okay. So we're not selling this outright upfront. I want to be clear about that. We expect, and the intent there is that we want to make sure that our vision is executed. We don't want to turn the keys over right at the start. So we'll look at the proposals. We do expect, and I'm going to exclude the seven acres, you know, those remain, we contemplate the Mozy site remains under our control. There could be somebody who comes up and says, "I want to buy that," but I'm not going to put a high likelihood on that. But the rest of the parcels, as we see the development plans, that's when we get into the developer agreement, it'll talk about the financials and the release of those properties. It may very well come in stages.
Ron, you have anything to add to that?
So then I don't have a guarantee then that we would sell the land, because I don't want government being developers, right? I just don't want that.
Oh, Greg, tell me.
Hi, Greg.
Commissioner Greg Horwigdau, Deputy County Administrator. Yes, we are going to sell the property. If we have a proposal, for example, that occurred in other areas of the county, like Channelside, if someone comes in with a significant amount of money and an offer and a development plan that we like, and the board agrees with that, we probably would entertain a direct sale at that point. That's a long way away, though. We have a process that we've outlined. We think it's a good process. As John mentioned, it's a funnel. Now we're trying to get the proposals. We need to have the opportunity to vet those proposals and vet the financial acumen and ability of the different proposers. So we will come back to you with what we believe to be in the best financial interest of the county. Ultimately, we anticipate the property to be sold.
Okay. I've talked to you, actually, I'm glad that you took the mic. I've talked to you in the past that I disagree with county center being in the hub of the city of Tampa. I have looked at our vacant properties or underutilized properties of where I believe that county center should be. It seems, is this the biggest piece of property that is kind of underutilized that the county owns?
Not sure how to answer that, other than to say.
It's up there.
Yeah.
I'm glad I made a bunch of you smile, though, that are working on this. But you understand that.
If that's a proposal to work on an RFP for this particular facility, perhaps the board needs to have that conversation.
Yeah, I don't know that it's the right one or not, but I do want to make sure that we don't become developers. That's the private sector, that's the free markets realm, and I want to make sure that we remove ourselves from it at some point. As long as there's guarantees that are in there, I 100% support Mozy, a planetarium. I recall, one of my best childhood memories was the first time I've seen a planetarium, and I encourage that to be in our community. But I do want to make sure that we don't become developers throughout this process. So as long as we're, when we're working on these contracts, that it's not a suggestion that it's sold, that it's a guarantee that once it's developed, I understand that you want to make sure that it doesn't turn into another dilapidated university-area mall situation, and I appreciate that. It was really bad up there. In fact, the MacDill, when you arrived on the base in 2009, that was one of the kind of black flag areas. They would tell new arriving people that that was a dangerous area of the community and suggested staying away from that mall. So I'm happy to see that we're putting some type of protection in place. But when we proceed forward, as long as we're making sure that it's a guarantee that the government doesn't enter into the development space, and that it's a guarantee that we are selling, then I will continue to support whatever we think.
We are not intending to be the developer on this project.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I try, this is a great day for me. I try to stay out of other districts' business, but I just, I wanted to ask, Greg, could you come back here, too? And I know Mr. Chairman had mentioned, too, the word "live" as well. Is there a possibility of a component in the future of that type of, I don't want to say, because we just talked about us not being developers, but people living in this area? Is this?
Yes, Commissioner. The RFP is structured, again, with the great assistance of our team, to contemplate a wide variety of uses. One of those could be residential units. So we do believe that there's, in a mixed-use development, an opportunity for that to occur. We do believe that it's appropriate for the private development community that knows these markets the best and has done projects like this to suggest to us what the ultimate development mix looks like, and that very well could include some residential.
Well, my gosh. So the reason I am sticking my nose in this is because representing East and South County, where we have what the word is apartment sprawl, and I look at this property, I look at the surrounding area, and I see public transportation, I see an urban core, and this is one of those places where you could have all that walkability, people riding around. is one of those places where you could have all that walkability, people riding around on one wheels and scooters that people in East and South County do not want to do and chuckle at every time we mention it. That is something that we, that possibility of this could end up being in the future, correct?
Yes, sir. Your comments are well taken. This is ideally situated for that type of development.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'd just like to add a comment. I'm very supportive of this project. I think it's a win-win for our county, being that the number of acres that we have. One of the concerns that I have is on the DMBE. We only showing a 5% bonus, and I'd like to see that that be 15%, particularly while we're in the negotiation, while we're putting this RFP out on the streets. We can take five points from the top two, which would be the respondent's qualification and redevelopment, that's 35 points. We can make that 30 points. The approach and understanding of development proposals, 35 points. We can change that to 30 points, and then take those 10 points and put it on the DMWBE bonus points to make it 15. Okay? And still remain within a total of 105 points. If we can do that, what particular, as each agenda item, I look at the procurement participation, and majority of the times, developers don't even entertain the 5% bonus points, okay? Because it's not attractive. It's just simply not attractive. If we can increase that to 15, then they will have the minority to participate on this particular project. That's all I'm asking, okay?
Thank you, Commissioner. It's noted. And Scott Stromer or Ron, did you want to comment on it?
Sure. Well, the one thing I would stress is that once the final master developer's been chosen, that's when we negotiate that pre-development agreement. There'll be much more certainty about the various steps that are required, who they can use for additional services. And so that's really where the specificity associated with how they're going to execute MBE allocations and what they're going to be using them for. At this early stage, that's a pretty difficult thing for any proposer to make. Don't, I would say, we're not inclined to want to change it now, but we want to know that your objectives in the pre-development negotiation are something that we're going to push for. So that would be my, that would be our preference and my pledge.
Okay, I'll be watching and waiting.
I know you will. You watch all the time.
And I, yeah, two quick things. I want to, in the motion, include that we waive the rules to take the agenda item up earlier. And then I do like the way that Ron answered your question, because, well, I fully support your goal and what you want to achieve. I don't want to do anything on the front end that would potentially limit anyone from bidding and responding to it at the same time. But I think the way that Ron characterized addressing your issue is the right way to do it, so, okay.
Sorry. Oh, we have a motion on the floor, a motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Kemp. Please record your vote.
Do we have to do a wave of the rules, just?
I think it was part of the motion.
Yeah, it was.
Okay.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. And Agenda Item B3, I believe we also need a vote on, for the leases and licenses?
Yeah. Any other, anything else we need to address there? Does John want to say anything?
John?
I thought I saw you walk in.
Move.
Thank you all for all of your support throughout the years. We're going to put it to good use. John Smith, CEO of Mozy.
Okay, we got a motion. Motion by Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Kemp, I believe it was. Commissioner Wostel?
Can you walk me through, I asked for something, and it turns out more than one commissioner asked. I don't know who it was. Can you walk me through the county's continued financial responsibility for the buildings in this lease? I looked at it, and I want to understand what those financial obligations are. As I've stated very clearly, since its inception, I'm completely in support of Mozy and its continued existence in our community, but there is a limit to generosity, especially of people's taxes. So I want to understand.
Sure.
What those responsibilities are.
So on the, on the new leases going forward, you've seen the pass, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, just on.
Right.
It seems like this is going to pass, so.
Yeah, exactly. So Commissioner, the, let me break it down for you. So currently, for the next two years, what we've been doing today remains in place. We want to give Mozy, as we do with most of our nonprofits, when there's a change, the opportunity to plan and budget for any increased costs that will come to them. So in two years, Mr. Smith will be out of the East Building. Quite frankly, when he's out of the East Building, we could mothball it, reduce our costs. In two years, when we have a greater, we will also have greater input of what this development looks like, Mr. Smith, as you know, he will move his education into the West Building temporarily, along with emergency management. And the lease contemplates that at the beginning of year three, that he begins to pay, like our current nonprofit policy calls for, occupancy fees. Those are at cost to cover the county's costs. So he will actually be budgeting and planning for reducing some of the support he gets today. Typically, a site like Mozy, if you're to boil it down, we own the buildings, and typically what the county does is take care of major repairs and roofing. And we expect the nonprofits, similar to the History Center and others, to take care of the day-to-day, or if we're taking care of it, to reimburse us for the costs. That answers your question. That's in the term of that Mozy main lease.
So then it would just be some, your expectations then are, last year, we spent almost $400,000 on maintenance and utilities, I'm assuming of property taxes, into this property. So our expectation is that to be reduced significantly coming forward?
I would, and John, I think I may have mentioned this to you not to put him on the spot, but my guesstimate is there's probably a couple, 150,000 to 200,000. And keep in mind, we do own the buildings. The county has, I'll say, been slow, not sure with Mozy, so there's some repairs that we're doing to the buildings. And it's not necessarily some of the costs you may be looking at. Remember, he is not in every building.
Sure.
For example, the West Building is, as one of the commissioners I share, has great bones, and quite frankly, we're making sure that that could be a potential use and of great, you know, it adds to the property value. So there are some costs that are ours, and there are some costs that are Mozy, and we'll be fair in allocating those.
Okay, yeah, I, you know, and just for the general public's knowledge, they need to understand that just last year, we, out of the Seminole Gaming Funds, Mozy received $624,000 a year for the past, like, five or six years. And then they also were receiving, on top of that, which wasn't clear in the original nonprofit report, they were also receiving $500,000 a year of property taxes from a commissioner flag. So that brought in total 1.5 million general use funds. And I just, I want everybody to understand that while I'm certainly advocating for them to stay here, and I, while I haven't met Mr. Smith or had a meeting with him, rather, I do, I'm happy to hear that it seems like he's turned around a rather defunct agencies, and I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that whatever we do going forward significantly reduces, it looks like over the past 11 years, they received almost $14 million of general use funds. And I want to make sure that it's a, while it's a fair attraction to the community, that it's also an equitable benefit of their taxes, I guess is what I'm looking for in this agreement. And it sounds like we've achieved that, so I appreciate you clarifying.
All right, thanks, John. Excellent points. Commissioner Wostel? Okay, no one else in the queue with the motion, by Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Kemp. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, thank you.
Just want to say thank you to all the commissioners for both items.
Bonnie?
Thank you. We can now move to our first public hearing. This is Item D1. This is a public hearing regarding the Direct Payment Program, and Kathryn Benson from the County Attorney's Office will take us through this item. We do have several who have signed up to speak for this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kathryn Benson, Assistant County Attorney, County Attorney's Office. The Directed Payment Program, or DPP, ordinance established, enables the county to impose and collect an annual non-ad valorem special assessment that would be levied only on hospital properties in Hillsborough County. The assessment is then used to leverage federal funding to help bridge the Medicaid shortfall for Medicaid providers. Specifically, this ordinance reduces the requirement in the DPP that all the institutional healthcare providers release the county from all liability regarding imposition of the assessments to 75% of such providers. The requested revision provides flexibility with the program for new institutional healthcare providers in the county now and in the future. The ordinance still contains a provision requiring indemnification from those hospitals liable for at least 60% of the total assessment, with the entirety of any loss prorated among them. This public hearing was noticed in accordance with applicable law. And also included in the backup and on the county's website is the new statutorily required business impact estimate, and I would ask that the board ratify that document as well. I'm here, as well as Jean Early, the Director of Healthcare Services, if you have any questions, and this is a public hearing.
All right, thank you. We have three individuals that have signed up this morning. Colleen Ernst. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Colleen Ernst, and I work with several of the hospital systems here in Hillsborough County. We serve as technical experts on this hospital special assessment and on the Medicaid supplemental payment programs. I'm here simply to be available for any information that's needed and to express sincere thanks for all of the hard work of the county staff, Kathryn Benson, Jean Early, Debbie DeWitt, and of course, to the members of the commission for learning about this program, taking the time to understand the details and to learn about the impact that it makes for the community to help ensure hospitals are able to provide quality care to all individuals.
All right, thank you. Melanie Brown?
Good morning. Chair Hagan, members of the commission. My name is Melanie Brown, and I'm the Director of Government Advocacy for Advent Health's West Florida Division. And on behalf of Advent Health Tampa and Advent Health Carrollwood, just stand here in support of the hospital directed payment program and looking forward to continuing working with the county and your staff in continuing that program. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And the last speaker, signed up, Steve Harris.
Good morning, sir. Good morning. This is Steve Harris with the Tampa General Hospital, and I'll be brief. I just want to thank you all for your support for the directed payment program, and also on behalf of Tampa General, support this, really what is a tweak to an ordinance, which will, at a high level, reduce administrative burden for not only the county, but the providers. So this is really a win-win, and we support it. Again, we thank you. We also, and let me reiterate what Colleen says, we thank Jean Early, Debbie DeWitt, and Kathryn Benson and the entire team. They've really been helpful. Thanks a lot.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harris. No one else has signed up?
Move approval?
Motion, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers. If no one in the queue, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Then B4?
B4. This is an item to direct staff to advertise a public hearing for December 6th regarding the special assessment resolution and the role, and Jean Early will present this item.
Good morning, Ms. Early.
Good morning. I'm Jean Early, Healthcare Services Department. B4, just direct staff, as Bonnie just said, to schedule and advertise a public hearing for December 6th, 2023, at 10 o'clock, to consider approval of the special assessment and this assessment role for fiscal year 2024.
So moved. Got a motion, Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Kemp. If no comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you, sir. D2?
D2. This is also a public hearing. This is the first public hearing regarding the designation of a brownfield area. Yasha Petrovich is here to present this item.
Yasha Petrovich, Acting Director, Economic Development Department. This is the first public hearing for the designation of a brownfield area at 4810 South 50th Street in Tampa. This public hearing was deferred and continued from September 20th, 2023. There is no BOCC action required today, and a second public hearing to consider a resolution designating the brownfield area is set for November 15th at 10:00 a.m. during the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. Both public hearings have been properly noticed in accordance with Section 376.80 Parent 1 and 125.66 Parent 5 Florida statutes. On May 12th, 2023, 4810 Property LLC submitted an application requesting that Hillsborough County designate the parcel at 4810 South 50th Street Tampa as a brownfield area. The property consists of approximately 3.11 acres and is shown on the projected map. The brownfield area is a real property, the expansion, redevelopment, or reuse of which may be complicated by actual or perceived environmental contamination. The developer plans to start a wood pellet fuel business on the site. The designation provides certain potential benefits to the developer associated with the cleanup of the site, and there is no financial impact to the county associated with this designation. The advertised community meeting on this designation was held at Emmanuel P. Johnson Recreation Center near the site on August 28th, but no public comment was received. Since the community meeting was held as Hurricane Idalia was approaching, a rescheduled community meeting was held at the same recreation center October 9th, but again, no public comment was received. While there is no action required today, at the second public hearing before the Board of County Commissioners, the board must consider the following in determining the area to be designated. Number one, the person who owns or controls a potential brownfield site is requesting the designation and is agreed to rehabilitate and redevelop the brownfield site. Number two, the rehabilitation and redevelopment of the proposed brownfield site will result in economic productivity of the area, along with creation of at least five new permanent jobs at the brownfield site that are full-time equivalent positions, not associated with implementation of the brownfield site rehabilitation agreement, that are not, and are not associated with redevelopment, project demolition, or construction activities pursuant to the redevelopment of the proposed brownfield site or area. However, the job requirement, job creation requirement does not apply to the rehabilitation and redevelopment of brownfield site that will provide affordable housing as defined in Section 420.0004 Florida statutes, or the creation of recreational areas, conservation areas, or parks. Number three, the redevelopment of the proposed brownfield site is consistent with the local comprehensive plan and is permissible use under the applicable local land law development regulations. Number four, notice of the proposed rehabilitation of the redevelopment of the brownfield area has been provided to neighbors and nearby residents of the proposed area to be designated pursuant to Section 376.80 Parent 1C Florida statutes, and the person proposing the area for designation has afforded those receiving notice the opportunity for comments and suggestions about rehabilitation. Notice pursuant to this subparagraph must be posted in the affected area. And number five, the person proposing the area for designation has provided reasonable assurance that he or she has sufficient financial resources to implement and complete the rehabilitation agreement and the redevelopment of the brownfield site. I, along with Vivian Arenas Battles and the applicant, are available to answer any of your questions.
All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak at the item? Okay, no actions required today, so, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Bonnie?
Thank you. Our 1030 item is Item E1. This is a special appearance by Craig Richard, President and CEO of the Tampa Bay Economic Development Council, to present their annual, sorry, their final activity report for 2023.
I apologize for texting you, asking you to come here early, but I thought we were going to get to you earlier, but.
No problem, Commissioner. Anytime you text me, you know I'm going to be responsive, so thank you for having me, and it's really good to see everybody this morning. I'm here, my name is Craig Richard, President and CEO of the Tampa Bay Economic Development Council. It's a pleasure to be with you again today. Today, I'm supposed to report on our Q3 and Q4 report. So if any of you attended our annual meeting, some of it is going to be redundant, I got to tell you that now, so. to tell you that now, so, but we had a great year, and it's a pleasure to be with you. And I'm going to be brief because I know you guys are chugging through your agenda. So, first thing is, I want to point out that last year, we closed on 21 projects. And when I say "we," economic development is a team sport. It includes the economic development staff here at the county, the city, all of our educational institutions, so this is a total team effort. Of those 21 projects, eight were actual corporate and relo, and regional headquarters companies. Six of these projects were international, or we call them foreign direct investment projects. And we continue to see a strong FDI interest in Hillsborough County. In fact, about 40% of the new prospects that we generated over this past year were international and related. Some of those destinations include the UK, Canada. We're gonna, we've announced a project from Israel, Cybex, which is an Israeli cybersecurity company, which plans to create 150 jobs right here in Hillsborough County over the next three years. So what does that do in terms of our metrics and our performance? We far surpassed our capital investment goal and significantly increased our non-government funding goal. Now, why is the non-government funding goal important? Well, our contract with you is for about $450,000. We take that, and we actually leverage private sector funding to accomplish our economic development objectives. So for every $1 of county funding, we bring to the table another $7 in private sector funding. And it's become increasingly difficult, one of the goals that we had was a jobs goal. We did not make that goal, and one of the reasons is because it's just becoming increasingly difficult in this post-pandemic era, when you're talking about companies committing to local employment, because there's so much remote working going on. Along with remote working, and then most recently in the last state legislative session, state incentives were wiped out. So without those things, it's hard for companies to really commit to a certain job number, and that has impacted our, our job goals this year. But overall, when you combine all three together, we're in 134% over our goals. Now, one of the projects that I want to point out is a, it's a Hillsborough County local company. You know, while companies that locate here from out of state or something gets the big headlines, it's the local companies that are generating jobs and capital investment. And I want to point out one of those local companies, and that is Cascrete. They're locally, local-owned, family-owned, and they've been in this community for a long time. They're investing to, new equipment to modernize their facility. You know, anybody that's been around a concrete company knows that it's, is dusty and, and things, so they're modernizing their equipment to cut down on the noise and the dust and become a more greener partner. And we've worked with your staff on permitting issues, we're working with Career Source on workforce training issues, and they were very supportive. And in this picture, you'll see Dan Chaney, who's their interim CEO, and he's speaking at one of our Meet the Projects events and talking about how helpful the county was in helping this expansion occur. Next, I want to talk a little bit about our international efforts. As you know, we have an agreement with Pasco and Pinellas County to jointly market our region as Global Tampa Bay. And unfortunately, Commissioner Myers, this period covers Q3 and Q4, didn't cover our London trip, which was another Global Tampa Bay initiative. But most recently, we conducted an export sales mission to the Dominican Republic, and five Tampa Bay companies were present. We've conducted over 50 one-on-one meetings with an estimated sales of $15.79 million in services and merchandise sales, which will occur over the next 12 months. Now, why is that important? Because in order to fulfill these contracts and obligations, they actually have to hire people locally to complete those, those transactions. So exporting is a tremendous service for our, our local economy and our economic development efforts. Now, I want to report a little bit about our business retention and expansion efforts. Expand Tampa Bay. We've branded it Expand Tampa Bay. Our team engaged in over 160 company visits, and these visits, we take surveys when we meet with these companies, and these 160 companies represent about 49,000 local employees. And 46% of them reported year-over-year increased sales. That is a significant milestone, because of course, with sales comes employment. 31% plan to expand in the next three years. And that's, that's a, that's promising, especially in today's environment. Next, I want to talk a little bit about our, our marketing programs. One of the key campaigns that we use is LinkedIn, and we use LinkedIn for lead generation. I'm really pleased to report that our LinkedIn advertising campaigns has been very, very successful. These campaigns have generated 450,000 impressions, more than 1,500 clicks to our website, and what makes that even more impressive is that these generate leads for our business development team. And so we've generated over 20 new business leads for our community through these campaigns. Also, on a side note, our LinkedIn generation campaign was recently recognized by IEDC as one of the best-in-class LinkedIn generation campaigns, lead generations. I've reported on Make it Tampa Bay for, you know, ever, for the past three or four years now, and I got to admit, it's getting better and better. And I want to thank you, County Commissioners Court, for your support of this campaign. This is a partnership between Visit Tampa Bay and the EDC, and the whole purpose of it is to generate interest from young professionals to move here for careers, move here to establish their businesses, and this has been tremendously successful. And with our partners with Santiago and, and the whole team at Visit Tampa Bay, we could not be more, more pleased with the results. In fact, the site traffic, the website traffic, just over a three-month period, has increased 139%, because we've refreshed the, the website and created new collateral. We have 12,000 users between July and September, that has generated more than 15, 58 million impressions across all channels. So this is going tremendous, and really appreciate your support and your continuation and investment in this campaign. So I talked a little bit about our annual meeting last week, and I know several of you were in attendance, and I want to really thank you for doing that. At that annual meeting, we played a video from Commissioner Hagan, and who's our, a longtime economic development champion, and this video highlighted all of the initiatives that the county is prioritizing, which keep our economy buzzing. So if, since some of you weren't there, I'd like to play that video for you.
Hillsborough County is one of the fastest-growing counties in the US, and is among the top 10 places in the nation that millennials are moving to. Our community is a magnet for folks of all ages, but increasingly so for recent college grads who want to start their careers and families in Tampa Bay. A key reason for this, in addition to the incredible job opportunities we offer across industry sectors, is our year-round outdoor lifestyle. Hillsborough County strongly supports many festivals, arts and cultural experiences, and sporting events that make life here even more enjoyable for everyone. If playing sports is your passion, you can get outside and play almost every day. That's why Hillsborough County invested in the Tournament Sportsplex of Tampa Bay. This world-class facility is a mecca for young athletes and an economic engine for the county. In 2022, the Sportsplex welcomed over 100,000 athletes and spectators, and more than 3,500 teams competing in soccer, rugby, lacrosse, and other events. The 47 major tournaments held there generated over 68,000 hotel room nights and millions of dollars in revenue for Hillsborough County. Tampa Bay also attracts great numbers of artists, creatives, and technologists, a perfect mix of talent to power innovative industries like film and video production. Groundbreaking education partnerships like the one forged by the University of Tampa and View Studios are training students for cutting-edge roles in virtual production, one of the fastest-growing segments of the digital media industry. While state support for Florida's once-massive film industry has gone away, Hillsborough County created a first-of-its-kind local incentive to entice film productions to the area. Last year, the county incentivized eight total feature film and television projects at a total cost of $494,000. The return on this investment was $4.8 million. Among those projects was the third season of Nat Geo Disney Plus Secrets of the Zoo, which has resulted in a 20% increase in Zoo Tampa Bay attendance. Secrets of the Zoo would not have chosen Hillsborough County without our local incentives and the efforts of Film Tampa Bay. Investments in sports, film, and other arts and cultural experiences generate a far greater return to our community than most people realize, and contribute greatly to Hillsborough County's desirability as a destination where people want to live, work, and enjoy life. They are also a very important reason why companies choose to build their future in Tampa and Hillsborough County.
Great presentation, with, with the exception of the video. Didn't know you were going to show that.
Of course, we had to show that. You're, you're our, our up-and-coming superstar, so thank you so much for the opportunity to highlight and really showcase why quality of life is an important feature in our economic development efforts, and, and what the county is doing to do, to, to help us with that. You know, you've heard me say ad nauseam about the importance of collaboration and teamwork, where we're really pleased to announce one of our biggest collaborations yet. Just in this past January, TGH and the EDC signed a historic MOU to promote Tampa as a world-class medical, medical district in life sciences and healthcare destination. This is, is really important, because we really have a lot of the key ingredients to make that happen. And so we're, we're pleased to announce that the Tampa Bay Business Journal recognized that as an important milestone, and recognized TGH and the EDC as an NO award, which means, means it's a, a great partnership. So we won the Partnership of the Year category, and again, it's all because of the ability to collaborate and partner with, with the community. And I'm also, I have to pat our team on the back, because just this past year, we were also, the EDC was recognized as the Economic Development Organization of the Year by the International Economic Development Council. And so we could not do our job without support from you and all the leadership that you provide. So I want to thank you for that. And that concludes my report, and I'll leave some opportunities for any questions. Thank you again for your support and your leadership.
Well, thank you, Craig, for that presentation, and for the excellent job you and your team are doing. I know you guys are out there working hard every day, and we appreciate your, your impact on, on our community. I don't see anyone in the queue right now, so can we just have a motion to accept the report? Motion Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a great day. Thank you.
All right, Bonnie.
Final item or future discussion items?
Future issues. Commissioner Owen, I'm sure you do. Not today? Okay. Commissioner Winstall?
I have, is this future or new? Are we doing new next? Sorry.
Just future. These are things to come back to the Board at a later date.
I just would like a moment of privilege real quick, Mr. Chair, if that's okay, then it's not technically a new item. I wanted to acknowledge and thank Polk County Sheriff's Office, Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, Attorney General Ashley Moody, and District State Attorney Susan Lopez on their work and the apprehension of three individuals yesterday, two being illegal immigrants from Mexico, that were caught trafficking 10 kilograms of fentanyl into our community. These three individuals live in Hillsborough County, one in Wy Mama, which continues to be a concern, and two edging Wy Mama in Riverview. This is enough fentanyl to kill 5 million individuals, more than three times the amount of people that live in our community, and I want to just offer sincere congratulations to them for removing this poison from our streets, the failures of an unsecure border that's created this very, very dangerous environment for our community, just continues to plague us, and I can't thank them enough, so thank you very much, Chair.
And I saw the, saw the coverage of the press conference yesterday. Any other future issues? If not, words earned. Thank you.